I'm going to call the January 21st, 2025 Regular Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
LaShawn.
Here.
Shireman is absent. Moritz?
Yep.
Sharrick?
Here.
Hickman?
Me.
You have the January 7th, 2025 Regular Council Meeting minutes. Does anybody have any questions on those?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion to approve of Mr. Hickman's second. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Um, granting permission for visitors to speak. Is there anybody who would like to address council? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. Thank you, Mr. President. Is this council truly ready to represent the citizens of this community? Is this council ready to tell the truth about what's going on with everything? Is this council ready to stop hiding things that the public really needs to know? I don't think so. I think this council can do the will of the people of this community, but you're going to have to show it and prove it. You all have shown that it's easy to hide things and not tell the truth on any issue that comes before this government body. If you want the citizens to trust you, this council must be totally upfront with all the facts about everything that's going on. Quit hiding. Have public meetings, open discussions on the issues that face this community. Town hall meetings would be great, but not at a bar. It is time to stop taking money from the citizens and spend what you spend on whatever you want. It's time to be responsible and spend the money within the means of the city. Most people who live in the city can't afford to keep giving without giving up their basic needs. A third of the population of this city is 55 and older and are on fixed incomes, but this council administration keeps on giving out and giving out and giving out without due regard to the taxpayers. The police union agreed on the last contract to take a small increase. I thank them for that. They showed responsibility. They showed a commitment to this city. However, the others don't want to help out. Why? This council needs to stop this whole mess. Put the wage freeze on now. That includes everyone, including yourselves, the other elected officials, council clerk, any other city employees and unions. Time for the BS on the out-of-town tax credit to end. Cut spending in all possible ways. Wait until later this year and see in six months if things are better or if it's possible. Tonight, this council needs to vote by roll call vote on all these issues. That way, the citizens will see where you stand on these issues because you know that if the street levy passes, you will still come after the out-of-town tax credit. It's a given. This is not a game you want to be playing with the taxpayers. The voters will have a say in these matters, and you might not like what they do. Thank you.
Any other public participation?
Okay. Darren Miller, 800 Rogers Street. I don't really know where to start tonight. I've got a few things here. I finally wrote them down, so I won't forget them when I go back and sit down. I seriously think you need to consider time limits for public participation during the committee meetings. I came to the last committee meeting. I left 8:30. I think they started at 6:00. I left at 8:30 because I wanted to go get something to eat. Went to Baker's with my wife. Eat, got done, came home, got on Facebook. The meeting's still going on. Lasted like four hours and 40 or 30 minutes or somewhere in that vicinity. I'm not saying eliminate it. I'm just saying maybe go to a five-minute limit on that. Maybe allow people to come up to the podium more than once, like you do here. So if something's brought up during the committee, if they want to address it, they can come up again. The President, Frank Hauser, Mr. Frank Hauser, was up here for 31 minutes. I didn't timing. Someone else did when he was going through his call log with Vicki. I wasn't here. I was, I'd already left. He was here for 31 minutes at the podium. Granted, he wasn't talking the whole time. They were going back and forth. That's ridiculous. There's no reason for some of it. And I'm not just picking you out, other people. Mr. White is another one that's good at it. He comes up here every council meeting and bitches about the same thing. I mean, I think you all have heard his, Kurt and him were just out there talking together, so I'm sure he was probably telling him, hey, you need to say this too. Maybe not. Maybe not. Anyway, time limits. Dispensary. I don't know what we've gotten done on that. You guys are looking for tax revenue. Yeah, we've dicked around with this for probably months. Kurt seems real, you know, he wants something done with that too. I don't know whether he wants to maybe go in on a dispensary, which would be fine with me. Maybe then he wouldn't be on council. He wouldn't have half the follow we have. Okay. Another thing, the deal with the, I don't know, something wasn't done right the last meeting. Isn't the President supposed to run the meeting? And also, if he finds something wrong, shouldn't he approach council instead of putting it on a YouTube video or coming up to the podium as a citizen and surprising council? Shouldn't he come to you? Just my thoughts. Uh, I hear, I complained last time about not using the metal detector, so I see now we've got people wanted. Did all of you get wanted? Did any of you get wanted? Why not? If you're going to want, if you're going to want people coming to the meeting, you guys only want it too, in my opinion. I'm more afraid of that person right there coming in here and losing her shit and shooting somebody than I am about any of you. Okay? But if you're going to want people, you guys need to be wanted too. What else do we got? How much time do we got? Two minutes. All right. It's going quicker than I thought. Um, I found out you're up to date on Mrs. Shireman's pay deductions, so I'm not sure what happens now since she's on home arrest facing a felony two charge. Innocent until proven guilty, I understand that. Are these absences going to be counted as excused? I don't know. You guys probably need to talk about that. I don't feel somebody that's accused of a felony two crime, confined to their home, that they should be paid because they can't come to the meeting, but that's your decision. And then I did hear the last part of Mr. White talking about the out-of-town tax credit. I do believe, this might be one thing I might agree with him on, if he was talking against it, I don't think that's the way to go. Now, I don't have a dog in the fight. I used to work in Galleon. I didn't think it was the way to go then. I don't think it's the way to go now. You know, you're going to double tax people because they can't find a job in your community and they have to travel out either to make more money or because that's their trade out there. They should not be double taxed because of that. It's just, it's just not right. I mean, if any, you guys should be going after your state government who cut off all your damn funding for the cities. That's where the problem is. You know, you guys are almost all Republicans. That's, you guys have been in Ohio for how long? You're the one, your party is the one that cut the funding off to the cities. Do something about that instead of trying to don't account your workers. That's it.
Any other public participation?
Melanie Ellis, 915 Southeast Street. Been here before on the subject of the out-of-town tax credit, and I see that subject's been talked about in the Finance Committee and is, will probably be thrown around again as another option to help bring revenue into the city. I know the council may say this is the can being kicked down the road by past councils, but I'd like to ask this council and administration, what have you done to increase the tax revenue? What have you done as a council to increase the tax revenue? Have you brought in new businesses? Have you increased the tax base by people moving in? How about retaining the young adults who graduate, go off to college and don't want to set foot back into this small town that has absolutely nothing to offer? All I've seen this council do in the past year is increase the viewership of these meetings as people wait to see what kind of drama will happen next. There's been a lot of animosity amongst council members and community members, and it has gotten this city absolutely nowhere. I have been to council meetings and there have been ideas given on ways to increase the revenue, yet they go absolutely nowhere. I know it's been said that we can't charge businesses like Timken more for the city water, but we can for the sewer rates. Has that been done? No. Why are we still sitting on that? That's been talked about before. It's been brought up before. Gone nowhere. They should be paying four to five times more than what we as a city resident should pay. The safety levy that went on the ballot in November was doomed from the start. When the council as a whole isn't out speaking about it and holding town halls so people know why it's needed and what it's there for, there's no way it was going to pass. To be honest, most people probably didn't even know it was a thing until they saw it on the ballot, as very little was publicized or advertised about it. If you want to get something passed and it's new money, you need to start making sure that you as a council are behind it and talking about it instead of complaining. You can't have a President going with the Finance Committee chair didn't do this. You're one body. Start acting like it. Now, about the $4.25 an hour raise for your Ask Me employees. I'm not going to argue that people should deserve or get more money, but when the company, the city of Bucyrus, is in the red, do you justify increasing your employees' wages yet not even think twice that you're going to be taking wages from a select group of people you were voted to represent? I know I've worked for a union employer for 18 years and never gotten anything close to a $4.25 an hour raise. I've spent a few years with my pay frozen and forced to take cost savings days, days off with no pay, as my employer didn't have the money to give raises. I'm pretty sure if the city is facing a deficit, they also don't have money to give raises to anyone on their staff. Anyone on their staff. I'm asking council to start working together and make things happen to increase the revenue without punishing those of us who've had to seek living wages outside the city we live in, as I know most of us would rather not spend, have to spend the extra time and money traveling to a job away from home. If the out-of-town tax credit is reduced or eliminated, I will not vote for another levy, new or renewal, for the city again. Because I think it's time that you guys start looking at, and you know, you want to complain about the can being kicked down the road. This council has kicked the can for an entire year on issues that have gotten nowhere. And it's time for all of the public records requests and all of the digging, this, that, and the other from community. I mean, that's our time and wages of our city employees being wasted to come up here to complain and not get us anywhere. So if you guys vote for that, you guys really need to think about, because it's not just me. I mean, my husband's here. I have a friend here. We are all out-of-town workers. This affects us. There's a lot of people this is going to affect. And you guys need to start making wise decisions and giving people $4.25 an hour raises? Really? That's crazy. Have all of y'all received a $4.25 an hour raise from your employer this past year? Because the employer I work for has a huge rainy day fund, and I didn't get $4.25 an hour. So whether you want to say it's negotiating a contract for wages and it's, we're in a better place.
We've got a five-minute rule.
I got it.
Any other public participation?
Robert Taylor, 411 Plymouth Street. I'm going to do my best not to touch the microphone this time. First, a question. Anybody, any of you guys feeling unsafe? Nobody? Are we, is the city in a budget crunch? Yes? No? We are? Why are we paying this guy overtime? I still, I don't, and it's kind of to go on the coattails of what this lady said. People come up here and give you guys suggestions. You guys don't listen. Why are we paying? I know, it's been a school, couple hours, right? Not a big deal. You guys don't listen to us. There's no need to have a cop up here on overtime. You aren't scared of anybody in this city. If you are, take the gun-free zone sign down. So I, people like me, could come in here armed, and you don't have anything to be scared of. Now, Gary might still be scared. I don't know, but that's his problem, not mine. As an American citizen, as an American citizen, you are violating my rights. I don't understand why the same person has to keep coming here and saying the same thing and it falls on deaf ears. I really don't understand it. I had other things I wanted to talk about, but I asked this guy when I walked in, if he's on overtime. He said, yeah. And it's, good grief. And you're already $300,000 in the, in the red starting out, but we got a guy on overtime. And to get to the safety forces, and I'm going to exclude the police department on this statement, but we have a group of individuals up here at the fire department. They want big city money and small-town atmosphere, but they don't want the big-city responsibilities. I've yet to see a report from the fire chief that breaking down the calls. I live on the North End. I read the police reports. There's five calls going out. It's almost every time, you can't tell me every single time, they need an ambulance, a fire truck, and a cop. On every call in Bucyrus, they do it to pad the numbers. Every time they send out an ambulance and a fire truck, that's, that's two calls for the same call. They're padding the numbers, and then every three or four years, their union's going, their union rep's going to come up here, and they're going to line all the firefighters and cops up here behind us, and they're going to tug on people's emotions and use fear to try to, to try to shake us down for more money. That's got to stop. It's absurd what you guys are doing to the taxpayers. Now, I'm not saying that what they do is not valuable. Their skill set's very valuable. They've earned it. They should earn a very living wage, and from the guys I know, on both sides of that, the cops and the firefighters, none of them are hurting for money. They live in very nice homes, and they've earned it. I'm not taking any of that away, but the constituents, the people that are paying the bills, we aren't doing so well. And again, it's a, it's getting redundant that we keep saying the same things, but nothing, like, it hasn't been a policy change. Nobody's talking about it. Just, you kind of just hope everybody's going to go away. I don't understand why. You try to give you the benefit of the doubt and say, oh, I think you guys are doing a good job, but sometimes I think you guys don't care. It's just, it's lip service from a lot of you. And I don't know why it's like that. I don't know why our government has to be like that, especially on a local level. We're supposed to be a small community, and it just doesn't, it doesn't seem like that. I hope, I hope you guys can come to something to, to figure out what you need to do for the finances, for the money, and I would recommend that you go ahead and take away the out-of-town tax credit. I work out of town. Go ahead and do it. You're going to need the money in three years when the unions come back up here and shake everybody down again anyway. Just get it out of the way, put that money in the general fund, go buy, go buy the new fire truck you're going to need, buy the equipment you're going to need, fix the roof on the building, and be done with it. Because constantly threatening it and talking about it, just do it and be done with it. Then maybe you don't have to keep coming and asking for more money every three, four years, and maybe we don't have to keep lining service people up to tug on everybody's emotions.
Any other public participation? Seeing none, going to move on to communications and petitions. And we have Sarah Hurley with the Crawford Partnership for a fourth quarter report.
I'm good. Yep, I got it. Thank you very much. Thank you for having me this evening for our fourth quarter update from the Crawford Partnership. I'm pleased to be here and share some updates with you. I wanted to start this evening by sharing a little bit about the efforts that we put into job creation and investment. In our industry, the general rule of thumb is that 80% of growth comes from businesses already rooted in your community. That's why we put such an effort on our business retention and expansion program. And an example of that from this year would be advanced fiber technologies expansion, which created jobs and invested several million in the community. Our second attempt to bring in job creation and investment is through attraction, and most of our leads come through Regional Growth Partnership in Jobs, Ohio, and we review those to see if we have properties and utilities that can support this project's needs. One of the challenging parts in our role is confidentiality, and we often have to keep everything confidential as these businesses are sharing sensitive and proprietary information. I would love to come up and be able to tell you all the exciting things that I've heard and things that are under consideration, but unfortunately, that's not the way our job works. And in fact, some projects I even have had to sign non-disclosure agreements. So I just wanted to share a little bit on the efforts we put into job creation and To highlight some economic development activity in the fourth quarter, we continued our business retention and expansion, as I've just shared, and through the course of 2024, reviewed 67 leads for our county, and one of those is still active. And you can see the top sites submitted were the Crossroads Industrial Park, the Galleon Spec Building, and the former GE Building. So these are the buildings that have met most of the needs that I could submit this year. We also continue to support the city with services like our community reinvestment area and different tax exemptions for our business, helping to aid that process and make it easier. When I was here last in October, we were just getting ready for our wage tours, workforce awareness for graduates and educators, and I'm happy to report, thanks to Lisa's hard work, it was a phenomenal year bringing that program back in person. We had over 500 students, including Bucyrus students, and 17 businesses that opened their doors. Thirteen of those businesses were Bucyrus businesses. So it was excellent to expose our students to agriculture, healthcare, and manufacturing and the wide variety of jobs that are available within those sectors, hopefully reducing any stigmas and opening their mind to all the different roles from accounting to marketing and the different things it takes to run a business. We continue to work to strengthen our youth pipeline, excuse me, through youth science, which all of our school districts are participating in. This is replace community opportunity, as you've heard us say, and it tells students to take aptitude and assessments to see what they're good at and what they're interested in. They then can go out and search for jobs to line up with what they've just been told about what they might be good at or enjoy doing. Our effort is to get our local businesses on this platform so that those students see that those jobs are available right here in our communities rather than having to leave to do those. So that continues to be one of our largest efforts. In addition, we continue to meet with our employers to share things like tech cred and other workforce training programs to help them upskill and advance their workforce. Our community development efforts saw some great progress. The Brownfield Grant that Bucyrus is a part of, our work plan was accepted by the EPA, as were some additional forms and documents, and our policies and procedures for managing federal funds is under review with the partnership at this time, so great progress made there in quarter four. In addition, for the Community Development Block Grant that serves all of the county, the analysis of impediments for fair housing was accepted by the state, and that is due every five years. So we've had some progress in our community development area as well. Quarter four also saw the end of the 2024 CU Lead Program with three sessions, government being one of those exposing them to how to get engaged and the different ways to run for office. We had our CU Impact Event for the second time this year, seeing significant progress with nearly 115 in attendance. Twenty-five nonprofits and organizations came to present and engage with our local leaders, and we recognized 23 graduates from the program, 13 of which work for Bucyrus companies. So all these efforts that we put in on a daily basis, we have key performance indicators that help us gauge if we're being productive or we're getting the results we need. So for 2024, we ended up with approximately an estimated 1.3 million in tax revenues, 55 new jobs, nearly 50% of those here in Bucyrus, and investment of 24 million. That investment includes economic, community, and workforce. So if someone invested $25,000 to train their staff, or an infrastructure project was put in, or an expansion like Advanced Fiber, all those numbers feed into that. And as you've heard us say throughout the year, we ranked in the top 3% this year for our economic development projects nationally, and then our stakeholder ratings continue to improve as we work hard to engage with those we serve. Unfortunately, there were a few projects that I thought we might get to announce at the end of the year, but they've rolled over to this year. One example being, there's a project I started in 2023 that is strong and active and had, like, it's on track. It just takes that long sometimes. I want to do a quick recap of our focused plan of action for 2024. So BRE, I've hit it on a lot tonight. It's one of our biggest programs that yields the best results. And so to benchmark our efforts and gauge that we're doing a good job, we compare ourselves to others in our region, and at the end of December, we ranked number one again out of the 14 non-metro counties. And the reason I share that is simply, we want to make sure that we are reaching out to our businesses and comparing ourselves to those in our industry. We also had launched the Crawford Business Exchange this year, and at the end of 2024, I'm working with a Crawford County business here in Bucyrus that's for sale, and we have had two leads come in from that. So the goal of that program is to help retain and keep that company and those jobs here by setting up a profile and a way for people to be aware that they might be retiring or selling their business. We also ended up with 30 press releases that we either authored or shared, and those generated 190 stories. And the value there is that we're building the reputation of our community. So when people are shopping online to see if they're going to come here or something along those lines, we're showing that our companies are investing, things are happening, new places are opening, and it also builds pride in our community when people don't realize that maybe someone expanded because they don't go to the industrial park or things like that. So it's a two-fold system there. We continue to make progress with our workforce development efforts, which I believe I shared last quarter, and we have Ashley Schall, who joined our team in September, and she has been engaged in the Brownfield Grant, serving Bucyrus, the Community Development Block Grant, and serving on the Tourism Advisory Council. So a couple of updates specific to quarter four in Bucyrus that I wanted to share. I have made progress with the townships in generating interest in a joint economic development district. I have secured an attorney who can come as an expert to speak on that topic. I'll continue to follow up with the other townships. So that is an exciting update. There are five projects, strong, active projects out in Crossroads that I worked on in quarter four. Four of them are still active, and so I'm very excited to watch those progress through the stages. And I've been supporting the city with the wastewater treatment plant as they evaluate some of their options there. And then finally, just to wrap up 2024, re-highlight a few things that the partnership did to support the city. We launched the loan program when the tornado hit the downtown businesses to help get them back online. We had our first ever state of the workforce survey so that we can better understand their needs. We had wage tours with our Bucyrus students, helped secure nearly $1.3 million for things like the Maple Crest and Norton Bicentennial Park and some of those community projects. We had Insight Consulting here in July, which I know I've talked about, but the exciting thing there is they teed us up for how we can work on real estate development in the future by grading our sites and giving us some best practices and ways to pursue that. And again, like I mentioned, definitely some activity in Crossroads Industrial Park that I'm very excited about. Are there any questions that I can answer or maybe bring information back? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a letter from Cody Ellis, dated January 14, 2025.
Hello. I am emailing to express my concern for the recent discussion and dismantling of the out-of-town tax credit. There are multiple different avenues the city can explore to help raise money to satisfy the shortfalls in the budget, yet here we are again discussing the one thing that will directly hurt your constituents. Instead of taxing businesses that use our city services, you have instead suggested attacking the very people you have instead suggested attacking the very people you're supposed to be protecting. There have been concerns expressed by several council members that if we were to institute a city income tax on businesses such as Timken, we will force them out of the city. But why isn't that the same concern raised when deciding to tax your own citizens? I think dismantling the out-of-town tax credit is a knee-jerk reaction to a budget shortfall that the city has known was inevitable. I am asking you to explore other options to solve the shortfall and leave the out-of-tax credit, leave the out-of-town tax credit alone. If you remove the credit, you will force your own citizens out of Bucyrus. So take your pick, multimillion-dollar businesses or the very people who voted you into office today, who have a median household income of barely $50,000. If you remove the credit, I will be leaving the city and taking my business elsewhere. I am open for discussion on my concerns. Best regards, Cody Ellis, 915 Southeast Street.
Need a motion to accept and file the communications official.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Standing Committee reports, Plating Committee, Mr. Me.
On February 12th at 6:00 p.m., 2025, we'll have a public hearing. BCO 1189.03, general resurfacing. BCO 1193.01, solar panels. And amendment to the BCO 1187 to add section 1187.021, entitled Ponds. And resolution to rezone 316 and 320 Woodlong from AR to R3 to allow accessory structure.
That's it. Any questions for the Plating Committee? Seeing none. Public Lands and Buildings Committee, Ms. Sherrick.
We have a more complete list of the properties owned by the city.
Questions for the Public Lands and Buildings Chair? Health and Safety Chairwoman, Mrs. DeShawn?
No report.
Any questions for Health and Safety Chair? Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Myers?
Finance Committee is going to continue looking at all options. And to Mr. White's request, we're going to look at scheduling a town hall meeting so that people can come in and have a group discussion, probably sometime mid-February. Stay tuned for a date.
Any questions for Finance Committee? Economic Development Committee, Mr. Hickman?
On Thursday, Mrs. Casey Grau will be coming for the quarter four report of the Tourism Bureau. And I believe next Tuesday at noon, I meet with the administration and a couple others to discuss what we can or possibly couldn't do with the All Ohio Future Fund. The end of my report.
Any questions for Economic Development?
Was January 28?
Service Committee, Mr. Moritz?
Nothing yet at this time? Mr. Law Director. Nothing yet this time?
Still working on it.
Let's report this time.
Any questions for Service Committee? Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure, Mrs. DeShawn?
No report.
Any questions for the Ad-Hoc Committee? Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Property Maintenance, Mr. Me?
Um, report. I'm going to save this.
Any questions for the Ad-Hoc Committee? Regarding that committee, there is three open seats. On the, I have the list of applicants. And I am going to bring, ask for a vote right now to appoint for the three open seats, Mr. Dan Wireball, Mr. Ray Thidoff. At this point in time, I would ask for a motion to approve those points.
They're moved. Second.
Mr. Me made the motion. Mr. Hickman seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. They have been approved. Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Zoning Matt, Mr. Me?
No report.
Any questions for the Ad-Hoc Committee? Seeing none. Traffic Commission, Mayor Truca?
I don't report.
Any questions for Traffic Commission? Need a motion to accept the committee reports collectively?
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Moritz seconded. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. They are approved. Report of City Officers, Mayor Truca?
Thank you, Mr. President. After a lengthy consideration and debate within the administration and after much input from the public regarding the added cameras and the partial internet services provided by Wavelength, the administration has made a decision what to do moving forward. Number one, the background of it, Wavelength has been donating their internet service to the city of Bucyrus for some time. The city of Bucyrus accepted this donation due to the looming financial crisis we were facing. Having canceled some of our service contracts with Spectrum, Wavelength began fulfilling partial internet's needs of the city. Sometime after that, Wavelength also donated cameras and their functionality to be used at All Miller Park and Shine's Art Park as well. Number two, the controversy, controversy began regarding the public perceived distrust of Wavelength owner Kurt Fankhauser. The citizens of Bucyrus have expressed their staunch opposition to having Wavelength administer the internet and the cameras. It is the opinion of the administration that the distrust began within the previous administration. While the allegations against Kurt Fankhauser and Wavelength were a rumor, distrust festered regarding the situation. Members of the public had further made several accusations against Kurt Fankhauser and Wavelength regarding his access to the cameras. The city of Bucyrus had the company known as COSI come in and do a security audit. Ultimately, multiple members of the public have demanded the city of Bucyrus shut down the cameras and change the internet service provider. Attempts of compromise, the administration has considered several different factors relating to the cameras and the internet, and has made attempts to find a compromise. Involving council, the administration, after discussion with the law director, thought it was best to allow the city council to make the rules regarding the operation of the cameras and the internet. The idea was met with opposition, and the public was unhappy with Wavelength being the provider. Livestreaming the cameras, the law director recommended we livestream the cameras so that anyone could watch them. However, without specifics, the public and certain council members assumed this would include the pool cameras and All Miller Park cameras, and would put children in danger. However, I would like to state that livestreaming sensitive cameras was never considered nor would ever be implemented. Moving the camera monitor, the administration, in collaboration with Wavelength, arranged for the camera fees to be made available to the public through a monitor in the mayor's office suite. The members of the public then pivoted their complaints to the fact that Kurt Fankhauser would still be administering the servers. Moving the servers, following the pivot of the contention to the physical servers, the administration, again, in collaboration with Wavelength, discussed moving the physical servers to mayor's office suite and be done with the whole situation. This proposal did not seem to please anyone either. The decision, the administration has made the following decision to immediately shut down the cameras until further notice. The administration is also currently reconciling our existing internet accounts with Spectrum and looking at further state of Ohio cost savings options with Spectrum as well. The other remaining Wavelength internet accounts will also be evaluated in the very near future. Thank you.
Any questions for the mayor? Seeing none. Moving on to the Service Director's Report. Mr. Starr?
Thank you, Mr. President. In 2026, America will be 200 years old. The city of Bucyrus is eligible to partake in American 250 Ohio. And as such, I would like to refer this to Public Lands and Buildings to create a resolution to support the Ohio Commission for the United States of America's semi-coincidental, the American 250 Ohio. In doing so, we could be eligible for grants for small revitalization projects in the future.
Any questions for Service Director?
I got a couple more things. I know they weren't on it. They came, they popped up.
What's that?
I got a couple more things. They popped up today. Thank you. Sorry about that. I also would like to refer the farmland bids for the Keese Road, which is around the wastewater treatment plant, Southern Avenue, or that's the wastewater treatment, Keese Road is is out by the reservoir of the the Southern Avenue, which is by the wastewater treatment plant. And and then the two parcels around the airport to Public Lands and Buildings for the farmland leasing.
Jesus, was that it?
No, I got one more thing. And also today, we put the Wendy's lot up for sale for the, in the paper, for the legal notice. For bid, to go out to bid. Now that's it. Thank you, sir.
What committee was the American 250? I know it says Public Lands and Buildings here.
Didn't we submit for something right after the OML?
I don't remember that.
After the what?
Ohio Municipal League Conference. That was when it was brought up back in October.
Around when the solar, or? Back in October. I don't remember this.
That's when we talked about it the first time.
Since it's for revitalization purposes, I would believe it would go to Economic Development Committee. But I, it probably wouldn't hurt to send it to both, just in case.
What do you think, Mr. Law Director?
I agree with Miranda.
Economic Committee and Public Lands and Buildings?
Yeah, it can't hurt to send them to both.
Mr. President? I'll make a motion to refer the American 250 to Public Lands and Buildings and Economic Development, as well as the farmland bids to Public Lands and Buildings.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Any questions for the Service Director? Moving on to the Law Director's Report. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had an interesting couple of weeks. The Bucyrus Community Improvement Corporation, the state has been given all the information that it requires for their audit. They're now requesting that prior to submitting our annual filings for the year 2024, which will be on time this year, that we update the composition of the corporation. As such, I would like to refer appointing new members of the CIC to the appropriate committee, which I believe would be Economic Development. On Thursday, before the last committee meeting, a sitting councilwoman was arrested. I'm aware that sitting councilwoman Carolyn Shatterman has been arrested on suspicion of theft, being a second-degree felony, as well as misdemeanor intimidation. At this time, there is no liability to the city of Bucyrus, and I will continue to monitor the situation very closely. However, I'm sure there are going to be a lot of questions. So I'd like to go through the typical procedure on how this stuff works. When someone is arrested on suspicion of a felony without first being indicted, the defendant is entitled to what is called an initial appearance in the municipal court. At that initial appearance, the court makes a bond determination and sets the matter for a preliminary hearing. A defendant is entitled to what is called a preliminary hearing within 10 days if they are incarcerated and 15 days if they're not incarcerated. At that preliminary hearing, it is beholden on the state to prove by probable cause standard that, one, a crime was probably committed, and, two, that the defendant is the one who probably committed it. If the court finds no probable cause, the case is dismissed, and the prosecutor may do more investigation and bring charges at a later date through the grand jury. If the court finds that there is probable cause, the case is bound over to grand jury for review. The defendant has the right to waive this preliminary hearing, and it is common practice to do so. This is solely a strategic maneuver. In Ohio, a grand jury is comprised of nine people, and seven of those nine people must vote to return an indictment. If an indictment is returned, then the criminal case proceeds, and it's filed with the common police court of the jurisdiction in question, and the defendant is arraigned and given a new bond determined by that court. The current status, it's my understanding that Carolyn has not yet been indicted, but has been charged with minor misdemeanor intimidation. According to the Crawford County Municipal Court Docket, the preliminary hearing has been waived. And I cannot stress this enough, waiving a preliminary hearing has no bearing on guilt or innocence. It is strictly a strategic maneuver. While the allegations levied against Carolyn are abhorrent on their face, I would like to remind everyone that we live in the United States of America, where every man, woman, and minor is presumed innocent until proven guilty beyond a reasonable doubt in a court of law. Moving forward, I am sure that there will be several variations of the following two questions, and I would like to get ahead of them. One, Carolyn has not been found guilty, and therefore, no grounds exist to remove her from counsel in relation to this matter. Two, Carolyn is on house arrest and therefore unable to attend council meetings. Whether she remains on house arrest if she is indicted remains to be seen. However, the city council is under no legal obligation to excuse her absence. However, in the interest of justice, I recommend that her absence be excused as she is presumed innocent until proven guilty beyond a reasonable doubt in a court of law. I will try my best to answer any questions regarding the city that I'm able to. However, it should be noted that I'm not Carolyn's attorney for this matter. While I previously was a felony criminal defense attorney, that is no longer my role. My only official interest in this matter is how it relates, if at all, to the city of Bucyrus. As for the American Tower, American Tower has since rescinded their request for a lease extension, thus mooting the issue. Apparently, the extension process is too arduous for their liking, and they will reach back out to the city when we get closer to the lease expiration in 2041. About the airport terminal improvement, I've been in contact with Dave Shealy and their accountant to create a to-do list of things the city needs to get done in order to move this project along. The city of Bucyrus is in the process of filing completed articles of incorporation with the Ohio Secretary of State for a nonprofit domestic corporation called, quote, "Port Bucyrus Airport Terminal Improvement Fund Incorporated," unquote, to facilitate this endeavor. As we whittle away the to-do list, I will keep the city updated, and that is my report.
Any questions for the Law Director? Seeing none. Moving-
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to refer the appointments to the CIC to Economic Development.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded to refer the appointment of the members to CIC to the Economic Development Committee. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Moving on to the Auditor's Report. Ms. Lewis?
As your city auditor, I'm pleased to present the city of Bucyrus's year-end report for the year 2024. This report highlights the city's current financial position, shares key takeaways about our budget and spending, and discusses where we stand as we head into 2025. While we have made progress in some areas, it's clear that we are facing a challenge that requires action, namely finding ways to bring in more revenue to ensure the continued stability of Bucyrus. In 2024, the city of Bucyrus managed to keep its spending under control and saw small increases in revenue. However, while we've done our best to balance the budget, it's becoming evident the city's current revenue sources, mainly income and property taxes, are not growing fast enough to keep up with the rising costs of services and infrastructure. In simple terms, we need to find ways to bring in more money to keep up with increasing needs from road repairs to public safety. The total revenue in the general fund in 2024 was $5,544,697.72. The expenditures in the general fund in 2024- The expenditures in the general fund in 2024 were $5,404,501.48. The total revenue in the Safety Forces Fund in 2024 was $4,883.11. And the total expenditures in the Safety Forces Fund in 2024 were $4,866,220.92. So, that's just showing in those two funds, we brought in over $10 million, and we spent all but $149,328.33. And that was with really kind of raining it in at the end, making cuts, not replacing things that needed replaced, so we could be within our revenues. Most of the city's money comes from a few key sources: income tax, property tax, charges for services like utilities and state or federal grants. While we saw small increases in, increases in some of these, others have remained flat or even decreased. For example, property taxes were, we brought in $475,178.10. It's stable, but with no room to grow. And income taxes, we brought in, this is just, just income tax into the general fund, is $3,621,876.87. Our, and you'll hear me say this a lot, LGA funds, that stands for local government funds, both state and county, and I do agree with Robert Taylor on that, so it is something that would be nice to see our state give us back. We only brought in $262,585.27. Grants, we had two large COVID-assistant trunks of money for police and fire that wrapped up at the end of 2024. Though we've seen modest growth in some areas, our reliance on income and property taxes alone is limiting. We are doing our best to keep up with, to keep costs in check, but some expenses are growing faster than expected. The biggest areas of spending are public safety, street maintenance, and infrastructure projects, all of which are vital to maintain the quality of life here in Bucyrus. These areas have been, have seen steady increases in costs from personal services to rising material prices. Here's where the money is going: public services, police and fire. We spent $6,116,305.46. Street mainten, maintenance, I'm sorry, $2,428,267.44. In parks and recreation, we've only spent $122,507.99. And general government, we've spent $5,404,501.48. Debt service, that's payments on water filtration plants, various capital projects, fire trucks, basically all the loans that we owe on. Our debt service was $1,828,61.28. While the city is keeping a close eye on spending, the reality is that costs continue to rise, whether it's for salaries, materials, or services. The pressure on our budget will only increase. When it comes to the debt payments, in principle, we spent $1,486,364.18. In interest, we spent $341,697.10. The good news is that we're meeting our debt obligations, however, the need for more infrastructure investment in the coming years could force us to borrow again. For instance, the, we'll more than likely have to take out that 58,000, or, that numbers inflects, 58 million dollar loan for the wastewater plant. So that would be another loan we have to take on. And that was significantly higher than the filtration plant, so our loan will be significant. While the city's finances are stable for now, we can't ignore the growing need for additional revenue without finding new sources of income. We risk falling short of funds needed to keep up with rising costs and maintain the levels of services Bucyrus residents expect. Things that we need to focus on in the coming years: economic development, attracting new businesses to Bucyrus is an important step toward growing the city's tax base. With more businesses, we'll have more revenue to support essential services like roads, police, and fire. Managing costs, where we are doing our best to do that, but while finding new sources of revenue is essential, we also need to keep the costs under control, meaning finding ways to make our operations more efficient, managing public safety costs, and carefully evaluating future capital projects. Engaging residents. The financial health of Bucyrus ultimately depends on the people who live here. We need your input and potential new revenue options and priorities for spending. It's important that we all work together to find the right balance. In conclusion, Bucyrus is in a tenuous position financially in 2024 and 2025, but we must recognize that without new revenue streams, we could face difficult choices ahead. To continue providing high-quality services and to address long-term needs like infrastructure, we need to act now to diversify and grow our revenue base. We appreciate the support of all Bucyrus residents and encourage you to stay engaged as we continue to work on a sustainable path forward for our city. As for referrals to Finance Committee, the reimbursement to the general fund from enterprise funds. To Finance Committee, the appropriations needed for the reimbursements to general fund from the enterprise funds. And to Finance Committee, transfers needed for reimbursement to the general fund from enterprise funds. Thank you.
You have two referrals, but there's only one on the paper here?
There should be three.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
I will make a motion to refer the reimbursements, appropriations, and transfers associated with the enterprise funds.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made the motion to refer. Ms. Scher seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
That takes care of all three of them. Any questions for the auditor? I wanted to highlight on the revenue situation. So if the levy had passed, and correct me if I'm wrong, we would still have this $300,000 budget deficit, correct?
So, we would be, no, because we would have anticipated to bring in those revenues. Gosh, I'm trying to think, sorry, it's been a while, I kind of put it out of my mind since it passed. We would have received revenues for those property taxes. We possibly still would have been at the $300,000 deficit for this year, but the next year, we would have seen an increase in revenues, if that makes sense, when the property taxes-
But those revenues couldn't be sent to wages or salaries, because that levy was specifically for equipment only.
Yes.
And the problem we have now is we're running out of money for the wages and salaries.
Yes, but what happens is when you set that money aside for equipment, it allows space in those funds for the money that would have been spent for equipment to go to other things, like salaries or something like that, if that makes sense.
I know the, the fire truck loan payments could be made with that equipment levy if it had passed, but how much is that a year?
I want to say $66,000.
So not, not a lot.
Yeah, that might be interest and, that might be all of it. I don't, I can't remember off the top of my head what a loan payment is.
So, any idea how much other equipment-type stuff might have been able to be paid for out of that levy if it had passed?
Not without it in front of me. I don't want to give any incorrect numbers. I apologize.
So, I just wanted to make everybody aware that that, the financial situation is actually worse than the $300,000 when you factor in that these equipments and things, you know, we're, we're actually deferring equipment replacement right now because we're out of money. There's none in the 2025 budget, right? No, not a single piece of vehicle.
Let me check before I say any-
I mean, you're definitely not buying any new vehicles.
No, and if it was in the budget, we wouldn't be spending it, but let me just double-check really quickly. We have money in police vehicle maintenance, but nothing to purchase new vehicles, so that just goes to the fleet of vehicles we have to keep, to do upkeep on that.
How much is that about?
Currently, we budgeted $20,000. And fire? We have nothing for new vehicles for fire either.
So, the $300,000 shortfall, if we consider that the city does consume vehicles and needs to replace those vehicles, I'm just taking a guess here and say that our vehicle replacement average is probably another $300,000 to $500,000 a year?
For the police, I know off the top of my head, if we want to replace two cruisers, it's, Tommy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it like $120,000?
Around $120,000.
Yeah.
So we're, we're actually more than $300,000 in red?
Yeah, if we were replacing vehicles at the manner, at the speed which we would like to, yes.
Well, I hope that the Finance Committee can quickly come to something, because the longer this goes on, the more you have city employees seeing this and saying, what is the future going to be? And I, and I hate to see them have to go to sleep at night wondering, you know, what's going to be the future here? I, I encourage the Finance Committee to quickly address this issue in the upcoming weeks. But I'm going to leave that up to the Finance Committee. And they did say they wanted to have a public hearing, or what was that? Town hall meeting in February. I hope everybody shows up, and that's all we can do, is wait for the town hall. Any other questions for the auditor? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to, we have a Treasurer's Report dated December 2024. The motion to accept and file.
I'll make a motion to accept and file the Treasurer's Report.
Ms. Scher has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Marit seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Fire chief has included a report, which is December 2024 EMS/Fire Report. The motion to accept or file it.
I'll make a motion to accept and file the Fire Report.
Second.
Ms. Scher made the motion to accept and file. Mr. Hickman seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then I need a motion to accept all the city officers' reports.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scher made the motion. Mr. Marit seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Visitors input regarding reports of standing slash special committees and city officers.
Here in Eller, in the Rockwood Street. I just want to make sure on your report, Mayor, you say you're going to remove the cameras, or you're just going to disable them?
Well, right now, I'm disabled immediately, yes.
So in other words, then Kurt Frankhauser won't have any access to them?
Correct.
Now, we also have cameras up that the city has, our own, that have nothing to do with them, or do those go through Wavelength also? Or do we not have any cameras that are just totally?
We, we have our own cameras here.
But they go through Wavelength?
No.
Okay.
No, they go, they go through.
So until you get this figured out, and you disable them or whatever, he won't have access to anything until we figure out what we're going to-
Right.
Robert Taylor, 411 Plymouth Street. First of all, Mr. Mayor, I just, you're not going to make everybody happy, and I do appreciate you giving us a rundown of the camera situation and what your perspective on it is. You're not going to make the public happy. I think what Kurt did was generous to help the city out, because obviously, we're not managing our money, or we don't have money to manage, however you want to look at it, doesn't matter, right? And the public, there's public outcry about the security of it or whatever, whether it's warranted or not. You're not going to make everybody happy. If you can save the city money by not going to a corporation like Spectrum, and we can stay with a small business like Wavelength, there's a guy that's here in town, I don't have an issue with it, and that's just my personal opinion as, as a single taxpayer, okay? And kind of the same perspective to the Finance Committee, you're not going to make everybody happy, that the longer you sit on your hands, the worse this gets. And you're going to have to do something. My recommendation, just as a single taxpayer that works out of town, you're going to have to take away the, the out-of-town tax credit. That's just the reality. The public's going to have to accept it. That's what I see. And this is not, and it always seems like I'm picking on the fire department, I'm not. But if money is so tight, these, those guys have, they have, they live at the fire department when they're working there, right? It's 24/7, like they have refrigerator and stove and housing, things like that. I probably shouldn't see these guys in the fire truck at a restaurant getting food. I get it, you got to eat, there's other ways about that. They shouldn't be driving the, the fire truck to that. They shouldn't be driving the ambulances to that. Figure out something else, and that's my understanding, is that something that you influence as the Service Director, like how things are ran there, Tommy?
To an extent, yeah.
I, I think that's probably something you need to get involved in and, and do what you can. And even if it's $10, if you're saving the city $10, you're saving the city $10. It's the same concept back here. We've got a guy on overtime and worth $300,000 in the hole before we get started. It does not make sense, and it doesn't look good. And it's, it's redundant.
Any other public participation? Seeing none, moving on to consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed Ordinance 2-2025, it's amending Ordinance 2-2023, establishing the salaries of the president, the president of council and council members effective retroactively to January 1, 2025, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 3-2025, it's amending Ordinance 8-2021, establishing the salary of the city treasurer plus the entitlement of life insurance effective January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2029, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 4-2025, it's Bucyrus Codified Ordinance, Section 905.01, sidewalks. It's an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 905 of the Bucyrus Codified Ordinances entitled sidewalks under Section 905.01 entitled notification, discovery, and written notice of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio. Ordinance 5-2025, it's the appointment of auditor to the Board of Control, amending and supplementing Title V of the Bucyrus Codified Ordinances entitled administrative, and establishing Chapter 131 entitled Control Board comp, position of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio. Ordinance 6-2025, it's the street levy renewal, amending and supplementing, one, Section 2 entitled imposition, imposition of tax of Ordinance Number 57-2003, levying a Bucyrus City Income Tax and passed in its original form on December 30, 2003, and revised thereafter from time to time and to, Section 16 thereof, entitled effective period to provide subject to the required approval of a majority of the, of the electorate at the next general election on May 6, 2025, for a levy continuing for a period of six years on an additional one-half of 1% tax on income effective July 1, 2025, with the entire proceeds generated therefrom throughout, offer said six-year period and from, from and after July 1, 2025, to be exclusively used for the construction, general improvement, and continued maintenance, repair, and upkeep of public streets, thoroughfares, and alleys, curbs, gutters, catch basins, and wheelchair ramps within the city of Bucyrus, as well as the purchase of such street equipment and machinery as may be deemed necessary to accomplish same and declaring an emergency. Resolution 202-2025, it's appointment of Floyd Farmer to the BZA and BBSA pursuant to Bucyrus Codified Ordinance, Section 1141.03A, regulating the Board of Zoning Appeals membership of the Bucyrus, the Bucyrus City Council hereby- The BISRS, the BISRS City Council hereby appoints Floyd Farmer, presently residing at 745 West Perry Street, BISRS, Ohio, to a four-year term as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, commencing retroactively to January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2028, and pursuant to BISRS Codified Ordinance, Section 1319.10, regulating the Board of Building Standards and Appeals. As a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, Floyd Farmer is hereby appointed to a four-year term as a member of the Board of Building Standards and Appeals, commencing retroactively to January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2028, and declaring an emergency. Resolution 203-2025, it's the selling of the North End Fire Station. It's a resolution authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of BISRS to advertise for bids for the sale of 606 North Sandusky Avenue, BISRS, Ohio, permanent parcel numbers 08-0050047.000 and 08-0050048.00. All said parcels being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future needed for any municipal purposes. Further, authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director to set the minimum bid for offeredment of property to be no less than $262,500 and no cents, and to enter into a purchase agreement with the highest and best bidder, and to deliver a quick claim deed therefore, while reserving the right to reject any and all bids, and declaring an emergency. Resolution Number 204-2025, it's street levy renewal part two. It's directing the Board of Elections of Crawford County, Ohio, to conduct an election at the general election of the 6th day of May, 2025, with the City of BISRS, Ohio, on the question of whether a one-half of a 1% increase above and beyond the basic 1% city income tax should be continued uninterrupted for an additional six-year period commencing July 1, 2025. The proceeds generated therefrom throughout, offer said six-year period and from and thereafter July 1, 2025, to be exclusively used for the construction, general improvement, and continued maintenance, repair, and upkeep of public streets, thoroughfares, and alleys, curbs, gutters, catch basins, and wheelchair ramps within the City of BISRS, Ohio, as well as the purchase of such street equipment, as well as the purchase of such street equipment and machinery as may be deemed necessary to accomplish same, and declaring an emergency.
The motion accepted as first reading? Ms. Sherrick?
Ordinance 2-2025. It starts 2025, but it doesn't go through 2027, but they needed it for the next two-year term? The 2025 is part of this two-year term?
This piece, I'm sorry, is wrong.
Yeah, it's...
I mean, you know, I sent to our committee.
Well, it's not right, I'm sorry.
No, it's not.
It should be for '26 and '27.
Yeah.
So, currently, the previous ordinance that we are amending, the salaries for the Council President and Council Members, it expires in 2024, so...
That piece was done wrong.
That one was done wrong as well.
That is done wrong.
I will, I will agree.
This needs to add '27 for sure.
Because this piece is supposed to be telling the Board of Education, excuse me, or the Board of Elections, what the salary's going to be for both your Council President and your Council Members for the new term, that, which is 2026 and 2027. So, I'm still back with what I proposed. You know, I sent you an email and said, here are my revisions. I still feel this retroactively two needs to be removed. And January 1, 2025 should be January 1, 2026. That's in the caption. Section 1 should state 2026 and 2027, and not 2025 and 2026. Same thing in Section 2. 2025 should be 2026, and 2026 should be 2027.
Vicki, however, if it didn't go through 2025, we need 2025 in there as well. So, it would be '25, '26, and '27. If 2025 hasn't covered it...
Correct. If we made the, if we made the changes that you suggested, my understanding is that council wouldn't be paid for 2025, which sounds like a great idea. However, it would be a violation of the 13th Amendment.
And, and I got that in your email that you sent to me, but let me ask you this question. It's obvious, if you look at Ordinance Number 2-2023, when it was prepared, all the other matters, such as the Mayor, the Law Director, the Auditor, they had the appropriate years in there for them, which all started at 2024, because well, that was even wrong.
Mr. Myers?
I'm going to request that we table this, and I'm going to further request, can we schedule a special? Or we could do it now. We could correct it now.
Well...
Or we could have a special council meeting on Thursday because they need this.
We, we could go into recess right now, and we could let the Law Director go down to his office and make the changes. Otherwise, if we're going, we would have, you're right, we would have to have a special meeting between now and February 5, probably February 4.
Okay, you could not consider these years as Scrivener errors?
No.
Okay.
Nope, they're not Scrivener errors, because as has been pointed out, the last one was done wrong, and the one before that was done wrong.
Wait a minute.
Which means that probably the one before that was done wrong. So, if you guys want to fix it.
Just hold on a second.
The next time you don't amend it, you just put out a new one.
No, the one before that, for the President of Council and the Council Members, which was Ordinance Number 7-2021, which was to be effective January 1, 2022, it says right in there that their payment will be for calendar year 2022 and 2023. So, the one done in 2021 was correct.
Do you want to fix it now, or?
Yeah, we can fix it now.
Yeah, can we just do a recess?
Okay, we're going to go into a rese, well, before we go into recess, you say, Vicki, that the one that's in effect for our current pay right now actually doesn't include the year 2025 in it?
No, it's wrong. It says during 2023, and even though it's not effective till January 1, 2024, it goes on to say that it covers 2023. Well, if it doesn't go in effect until January 1, 2024, how could you pay during 2023? That makes absolutely no sense.
That would have been a Scrivener on that one, probably.
Well, the Law Director's saying that cannot be considered a Scrivener.
That can't be a Scrivener, sir.
So, my question is, if there's nothing that's been passed saying that we get pay in 2025, does that mean this whole 2025 council term, nobody gets paid up here?
Incorrect.
Now, why is it incorrect?
I was going to say.
Because these have to be in before the, the, the people filed or run for these offices. You can't change the pay midterm. So, if there's nothing that was said we get paid in 2025, I don't believe you can legally change it after the fact.
Well, we can't legally not pay people. That would effectively be in...
I mean, we're, we're...
I mean, unless everybody could go to it. But then, people running would be expecting compensation. So, it doesn't matter what the ordinance says. State and federal law trump it.
Yeah, but people get, people don't get paid to be on some of these commissions and boards and things. So, wouldn't that, what's the difference between that and a sitting council member?
Well, I do believe that the commissions, the county commissioners?
Planning Commission, Planning Commission members don't get paid. So, where's your 13th Amendment on that?
Are they elected?
No.
Now, they're appointed.
That's what I thought.
So, can we, can we make a motion to go into recess to get this?
Well, before, before we go into recess, is there any other legislations that you think need corrected, Vicki? That way, he can correct them all in the same recess.
Well, I had sent my suggested revisions to the Law Director, and he responded as to what he felt needed to be done. And I don't agree with him, but I'm not going to sit here and I'm not going to take the time to point out what I feel needs to be changed. I'm just going to vote no on the legislation.
So, with Carolyn absent, if there's any no votes on these emergencies, they get held to a first reading tonight?
Well, that would be, that would be a no, if I...
You could vote yes to voting as an emergency.
Right, but then I'll vote no when it comes to adopting.
Right, we went through this with the...
Right, I'm, I'm learning.
Okay.
Yes. But this one definitely, I, this, this has to be, this one I do not agree that...
I don't, it's, I can just declare. You don't have to make a motion. We're going to go into recess at 8:21 PM. Back from our break at 8:36 PM. We have fixed the legislation.
Right, so let me provide some kind of explanation here. So, the, it seems like the original legislation was done correctly back in 2021. However, the previous administration didn't do this correctly, and then the... We're amending broken legislation. So, if we want to make a permanent fix for this, we have to create new legislation in 2027. But this will fix as a Band-Aid the problem.
This 2-2025.
Right.
Now, I have the only copy of it here, and I wanted to pass it around so each council member could see it before they vote on it. I'm going to pass it down to Vicki first.
Why are you doing that, worker? Sitting here did that prank, correct?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't want to...
Hey, Vicki, how you going to read it?
No. Miranda can read it. I mean, then that'll save time to... I mean, read the whole thing, the whole piece, not just the caption.
Oh, it's a short one.
Well, here, you can read it, just...
Sorry.
Establishing the salaries of the President of Council and Council Members effective retroactively to January 1, 2025, and declaring an emergency. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of BISRS, State of Ohio, two-thirds of all members elected thereto concurring.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Why are we saying retroactively? Because we are, this piece, we are only going to address for the next council term.
Wrong. We still have to cover this one, because the last administration, the last Law Director didn't do it right.
Didn't put the 2025 in right.
Right, so, didn't do it right. So, if you don't do it this way, like the Band-Aid fix,
Okay.
then we're taking pay away from the City Council, which, in 2025, which is fine if you guys want to do that, but we will need your consent. We just can't do it. We can't take it away from you. But you guys can absolutely agree to forego it. But that is up to you guys.
If it's good enough for the Law Director, it's good enough for me. Because he's the one that has to answer to the legal if there's a problem.
Correct, and I'm willing to do that.
Then, I'm, I'm sorry then, Miranda, if you wouldn't mind starting over, please.
Establishing the salaries of the President of Council and Council Members effective retroactively to January 1, 2025, and declaring an emergency. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of BISRS, State of Ohio, two-thirds of all members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the salary of the President of Council of the City of BISRS plus entitlement of life insurance coverage shall be $6,813.54 during 2025, $6,813.54 during 2026, and $6,813.54 during 2027 payable monthly. Section 2, that the salary of Council Members of the City of BISRS plus entitlement of life insurance coverage shall be $6,813.54 during 2025, $6,813.54 during 2026, and $6,813, $6, $6,813.54 during 2027 payable monthly. Section 3, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure in that the establishment of wage scales is necessary in order to meet the Crawford County Board of Election deadline of February 5, 2025, for the filing of petitions for the May 2025 primary election, same being deemed necessary for the preservation of health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the City of BISRS, and it shall therefore be in full force and effect from and after its passage.
And this emergency verbiage, you feel, is sufficient?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's, it's good to go.
Okay.
Okay, did any of the other council members want to see it, pass it around? Okay. Now, are we ready to accept as a first reading?
So would.
Wait a minute.
Nikki?
Did you change Resolution 204 and Resolu, or Resolution 204-2025? Mrs. Slater brought to our attention.
Yes, we did.
You did? Okay, well, I mean, nobody said anything.
Well, we haven't gotten to this yet.
Well, no, he asked if we're all accepting the first reading. Well, I'm not going to accept the first reading until I know that's been changed.
Okay, well, we'll back up here and go over the other one. Where's, where's the 204? Where's the 204? Was the two, the six changed too?
I don't know if you could do that as a Scrivener. General and primary, I don't think that's a Scrivener error. I wouldn't consider that.
Let's, let's read the other ones here that are changed.
Okay, so, on your Resolution 204-2025, in the caption, the second line, you changed the word "general" to "primary"?
Correct.
Okay, and then down in Section 1, you changed "general" to "primary"?
Correct.
Okay. Then, on Ordinance Number 6-2025...
No, we changed it. I, I promise.
Well?
I promise it was changed.
Well, we, don't we got to read them anyway? We got to read like that.
We can do that.
We have to, and since they've been changed, we haven't read them yet, let's read them now so that we...
You can stand, Miranda.
Am I reading the entire thing?
I believe we only have to read legally the top part, so let's just do that.
Ordinance 6-2025, amending and supplementing 1, Section 2, entitled imposition of tax of Ordinance Number 57-2020, no, 57-2003, levying a BISRS City Income Tax and passed in its original form on December 30, 2003, and revised thereafter from time to time and to, Section 16 thereof, entitled effective period to provide subject to the required approval of a majority of the electorate at the next primary election on May 6, 2025, for a levy continuing for a period of six years of an additional one-half of 1% tax on income effective January, effective July 1, 2025, with the entire proceeds generated therefrom throughout, offer said six-year period from and after July 1, 2025, to be exclusively used for the construction, general improvement, and continued maintenance, repair, and upkeep of public streets, thoroughfares, and alleys, curbs, gutters, catch basins, and wheelchair ramps within the City of BISRS, as well as the purchase of such street equipment and machinery as may be deemed necessary to accomplish same. as may be deemed necessary to accomplish same and declaring an emergency. Resolution number 204-2025, directing the Board of Elections of the Crawford County, of Crawford County, Ohio to conduct an election at the primary election of the 6th day of May, 2025, within, within the City of Bussaras, Ohio, on the question of whether a one-half of a 1% increase above and beyond the basic 1% city income tax should be continued uninterrupted for an additional six-year period commencing July 1st, 2025. The proceeds generated therefrom throughout, offer said six-year period from and after July 1st, 2025, to be exclusively used for the construction, general improvement, and continued maintenance, repair, and upkeep of public streets, thoroughfares, and alleys, curbs, gutters, catch basin, catch basins, and wheelchair ramps within the City of Bussaras, Ohio, as well as the purchase of such street equipment and machinery as may be deemed necessary to accomplish same and declaring an emergency.
Okay, now we need a motion to accept everything as a first reading. Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Scher seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time.
Thank you, Miranda.
Yep.
See no public participation. Consideration of proposed legislation for the second time.
Now, before we read that, I do have a comment to make.
Yes, Vicki.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're doing everything properly. Okay. Back at the December 17th council meeting, when we were having the second reading of this proposed legislation, which deals with the council clerk's compensation, I had asked for that resolution to be sent back to the Finance Committee to be corrected. Because I, and then it says, "Deshaun stated that after looking over Law Director Gobrick's 12-224 report, it states that the $4.25 an hour raise is in place of, not cumulative to the percentage increase that automatically applies at the beginning of the new year." So I stated that the $4.25 should be added to the current $20 rate the clerk is receiving, and not to the $21 rate that she would be receiving in 2025. So that was referred back to the Finance Committee. Then at the Finance Committee, and I'll just read what was in our minutes, which have yet to be approved. Meyer stated that the committee needs to decide if they want to amend the resolution to change the clerk's pay to $24.25, or leave it at $25.25 for 2025. Me questioned how it was negotiated. Law Director Gobrick stated that it was an extra dollar. Meyer stated that he believes me is asking for the comparison to other employees receiving the $4.25 raise. Gobrick stated that in 2021, the clerk's pay was very low and has continued to be low compared to Gallion's clerk, who currently earns four per hour than our clerk. And the extra dollar, in his opinion, is a thank you. Moritz stated that Clerk Wise has done a great job. Me stated that he would like to see the resolution passed to include the extra dollar. Moritz stated that his concern would be that in giving the clerk a $5 raise, or really, yeah, $5.25 raise, it could cause problems with negotiations down the road. Gobrick stated that he doesn't see that being a problem since the ASME unit signed off on it. They were totally for it. Me questioned if the extra dollar has been budgeted for. Auditor Lewis stated that she believes she calculated at the percentage that was initially discussed. So then me moved to request that the, moved to request regular legislation putting Resolution Number 238, 2024, as originally written, back to full council. Now, I did a little more looking and back in November 21 at our Finance Committee meeting, it stated that, for Resolution Number 202-2024, Meyer stated that in conjunction with the above, since the council clerk is not a part of the manpower and billet, nor is she part of the union, and her pay is set by resolution, he is seeking a motion to increase the council clerk's pay by an additional $4.25 for 2025 to mirror the ASME contract retroactive to January 1, 2025. Me moved to request legislation to amend Resolution Number 202, 2024, to increase the council clerk's pay by an additional $4.25 for 2025 to mirror the ASME contract retroactive to January 1, 2025. So my only question there is, back in November, the Finance Committee said $4.25 to mirror the ASME contract retroactive to January 1. So $20 plus $4.25 is the 24.25. But when we get legislation, it's 25.25. In your comment, Mr. Gobrick, was that the extra dollar was a thank you. Even though, I didn't read this, also at the 12-19-24 Finance Committee, you stated, "Law Director Gobrick states that there appears to be some form of disconnect in regard to the repaired legislation for the council clerk raise." Gobrick stated that it was his understanding that the $1 extra raise was intended, and that the union signed off on it. And it appeared that everyone was in agreement with that amount. Well, I guess my question is, who's everyone was in agreement with that amount? The council?
That was my understanding.
Where's this sign off? Is there an actual paper that the ASME?
No, I talked to them.
And, and I'm just, and I, I'm just wondering here, it says, was intended and that the union signed off on it? Well, the union signed off on this extra dollar. Is that, they're giving their union clerks an extra dollar? So they're getting?
No, I ran it by the members of the, I ran it by the representatives to see if they would be upset with it because it was my understanding that the extra dollar was a thank you to Miranda, and it was my understanding that everybody was on board with it.
Okay. Who's saying that the extra dollar is a thank you? I, I, I'm just trying to understand it.
I mean, I talked to everybody about it.
Well.
All right, let's make this easy. That passed committee, right?
What passed committee?
The, the legislation, it passed committee, right?
No, it's still.
Still in committee.
In commit, no, yes, it passed committee.
So, we're at a council meeting. Let's put it to a vote.
It was advanced out of the Finance Committee as it is appearing before us right now.
Correct, so let's hold it to a vote, and that'll be the determinative factor.
It was at second reading tonight, so we're not ready.
Yeah, I was, I was right at consideration of proposed legislation for the second time.
Second time, got it.
And then accepted as it was read, and then I was going to say, except, no. We never.
We haven't read it yet.
Haven't read it yet.
Okay, so let's move on and read it.
Proposed Resolution 243-2024, it's amending Resolution 202-2024. Amending Resolution Number 202, appointing Miranda G. Wise to fill the position of Bussaras Council Clerk on a full-time, 40-hour-per-week basis from January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025, an hourly figure of $25.25, together with the available health insurance and sick leave entitlements, et cetera, for all non-union, non-elective, full-time, 40-hour-per-week city employees. Further, the clerk's 40-hour-per-week shall include her attendance at all regularly scheduled and specially called council meetings and regularly scheduled and specially called committee meetings. Further, the clerk shall be paid compensation of one and one-half times the basic hourly rate for hours worked over 40 hours when authorized by the council president. Said appointment commencing retroactively to January 1st, 2025.
Okay, now we need a motion to accept as a second reading.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Public participation, any member of.
I'm not going to say all those opposed?
All those, I thought I did say it.
No.
No.
Okay. All those opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it passes. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the second time.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. And I know Vicki gets mad when I repeat myself, but why are we giving out more pay raises when we're still in deficit? I think this needs to be tabled. I think this needs to be looked at by the Finance Committee when we have public hearings. I believe that the ASME thing was a done deal that was done without the voters really and the citizens knowing about this. So if you all want to vote for this, go right ahead because I think it needs to be looked at, just like everything else needs to be looked at, at possible ways of saving money. I will repeat again, the police department took a small pay raise, and everybody else is getting huge pay raises. This is getting to be ridiculous. Thank you.
Any other public participation on legislation that's been read for the second time? Seeing none, refer back to originating committee. Ordinance 2-2025 is back to Finance. 3-2024, I'm sorry. Ordinance 3-2025 is referred back to Finance. Ordinance 4-2025 is referred back to Plating. Ordinance 5-2025 is referred back to Service. Ordinance 6-2025 is referred back to Finance. Resolution 243-2024 is referred back to Finance. Resolution 202-2025 is referred back to Plating. Resolution 203-2025 is referred back to public lands and buildings. Resolution 204-2025 is referred back to Finance. Committee report on pending legislation, Finance Committee.
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 2-2025, which amends ordinance 2, 2023. Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 3-2025, which amends ordinance 8-2021. Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 6-2025, which is street levy renewal. Finance is favorable to proposed Resolution 243-2024, which amends Resolution 202-2024. And finance is favorable to proposed Resolution 204-2025, Street Levy Renewal Part 2.
Plating Committee.
Proposed ordinance 4-2025 is favorable to BCO, Section 905.01 sidewalks. And proposed Resolution 202-2025, appointment of Floyd Farmer to the BZA and the BBSA. Plating is favorable.
Service Committee.
Service Committee is favorable to proposed ordinance 5-2025, appointment of Auditor 2 Board of Control.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee is favorable to proposed Resolution 203, 2025, selling the North Empire Station.
Further consideration of pending legislation for the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 2-2025, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
Second.
Ms. Scher made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded.
Scherick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Deshaun?
Yes.
Uh, Schirman is absent, Moritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 2-2025?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded.
No, Ms. Moritz.
Mr. Moritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Scherick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshaun?
Yes.
And Schirman is absent.
Ordinance 2-2025 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 3-2025, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshaun?
Yes.
Schirman is absent, Moritz?
Yes.
Scherick?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 3-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Scher seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Scherick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshaun?
Yes.
Schirman is absent, Moritz?
Yes.
Ordinance 3-2025 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 6-2025, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Scher seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Scherick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshaun?
Yes.
Schirman is absent, Moritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 6-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Scher seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Scherick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshaun?
Yes.
Schirman is absent, Moritz?
Yes.
Ordinance 6-2025 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 202-2025, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshaun?
Yes.
Schirman is absent, Moritz?
Yes.
Scherick?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 202-2025?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Moritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Scherick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshaun?
Yes.
And Schirman is absent.
Resolution 202-2025 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 203-2025, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Scher seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Scherick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshaun?
Yes.
Schirman is absent, Moritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 203-2025?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Scherick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshaun?
Yes.
And Schirman is absent.
Resolution 203-2025 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 204-2025, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Scher seconded.
Myers? Myers.
Yes.
Scher.
Yes.
Hickman.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
DeShawn.
Yes.
Schirman is absent, Moritz.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 204-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Scher seconded.
Myers.
Yes.
Scher.
Yes.
Hickman.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
DeShawn.
Yes.
Schirman is absent, Moritz.
Yes.
Resolution 204-2025 is duly adopted. Old and unfinished business. Mrs. DeShawn.
Let me get my papers here. At our January 7th council meeting, Mr. Fakehausser, you indicated that you were going to get for Clerk Wise the subcommittee list, and that that list be sent to you so that you could review it prior to this council meeting. That was to check the, I think it was more for maybe Mrs. Schirman to see what subcommittee she had been appointed to. Did you ask for that?
I have received it.
Okay.
I'm just in the process of reviewing it.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want a copy of it too?
No, no, that's not necessary. Then, secondly, at that same council meeting, you, we were talking about the marijuana dispensaries, and you had mentioned that Upper Sandusky had, you said something like a moratorium in saying that they weren't going to do nothing for 12 months or something. Mr. Myers asked if you could get a copy of that, which you said that you would, and then me asked if a copy of that then could be sent to all of us council members, and have you...
I emailed, I did contact Upper Sandusky, and I, I did get a response back, and they were saying, the response they sent me back was, there's not, we didn't do anything. Now, I was pretty sure I had seen something in the, whatever news publication that is over there, that there was something, and I haven't got back to looking back through that news to see what, because I could have sworn I saw something.
Would it be possible, just so I have a paper trail, if you could send me, or maybe to all the council members, your email that you sent to Upper and their response?
So they're, yeah, I'll send you their response back, you, so they, they don't publicize any email addresses on their website, you gotta use a contact submission form, so I got a response back from somebody there, but I will send you that response back, that's the only thing I got back.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. That's it.
Any other old unfinished business? Any new and miscellaneous business?
Did you have something in your business?
No, he took care of it.
No other new and miscellaneous business? I have a question for the law director. The Facebook Live and the comments, like Gallion City has their comments turned off, and I have several people that have talked to me in the community and said they don't like these comments being turned on, because there's a lot of, you, you get on there and it just goes crazy sometimes with the comments. Now, what, what came across my mind was, what if a business trying to move into this town says, hey, I'm, I'm just gonna pull up that town's Facebook page, and they start looking through these comments? They're gonna see these comments and say, I ain't moving to that town, so, and then I had also talked to Mr. White, and he said he had reached out to Marion City and has it in writing from their service director that their comment, they don't have any of these comments turned on either. So, I guess at this point...
Are we legally obligated to turn on the comments?
Well, I can reach out to Gallion and Marion and see what they're relying on, that they believe gives them authorization to turn off their comments. So I'll, I'll do that.
And since it's the city's Facebook page, who has control over that?
Administration has control.
So, there's nothing for us to do here?
No, I just, I was just bringing it up.
So, yeah.
Any other new miscellaneous business, or we're gonna move on to next item on the agenda, which is the excusing of any council members that are absent. We have one member that is absent from us tonight, and the law director had previously said something in his, during his report about his recommending that we do excuse that council member during this time, so I'm gonna open the floor up if anybody wants to make a motion to excuse Carolyn Schirman.
So, why do you think that we should excuse her?
Well, like I said, it's in the interest of justice, everyone's presumed innocent until proven guilty, and...
She's court ordered not to be...
Right, she's court ordered to be under house arrest.
But if you miss work because you're in jail or court ordered to be on house arrest, are you getting paid at work?
It's not my decision, I'm just saying...
I don't see where I would pay somebody to not do their job.
Sure, and that's, that's up to you.
And, and if I was sitting in jail, or if I was sitting in house on house arrest and could not go to work, my job is not going to pay me.
Don't shoot the messenger.
What was I gonna say?
Well, may I say something? I watched the initial, the video of Mrs. Schirman's initial appearance before Judge Luthold, and when the judge stated that she was under house arrest, could go nowhere, she did ask, what about my medical appointments? He said that he would allow her the ability to go to her medical appointments, go straight to them, when they're done, straight home. At no time did she ask about attending the council minute meetings. So as far as I'm concerned, she wasn't concerned about attending a council meeting, so I see absolutely no reason to excuse her from this council meeting.
I agree, sorry. I'm not one way or the other, I don't care, I'm just saying, in the interest of justice.
Well, we're not judging.
Right, you guys can say no.
No, no one's making a motion, so I think that...
Can I go on referrals?
Okay, I do not hear any motion for the excusing, so we're gonna move on to referrals.
So just so the record reflects, Mrs. Schirman is not excused from tonight's meeting.
Correct.
There, there was no motion made, so there is no excusing.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
We're gonna move on to referrals.
America 250, Ohio, to Economic Development and Public Lands and Buildings Committee. New members to the CIC, to Economic Development Committee. Reimbursement to general funds from enterprise funds to finance, appropriations for reimbursement to general fund from enterprise funds to finance, transfers for reimbursement to general fund for enterprise funds to finance, and farmland bids to public lands and buildings.
Uh, need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Scher seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned at 9:12 PM.